This meeting is being recorded per Governor Lamont's executive order seven B.
All right. Well, good evening. Thanks for your patience, everybody, and welcome to the November 2020 virtual meeting of the Weathersfield zoning board of appeals. A quick rundown of the agenda for tonight. We have five applications. We will first go through our public hearing on each of the five applications where we will hear presentation from the applicant. Any questions from the commissioners? We will invite anybody during the hearing who is wishing to speak, either in favor or in opposition to any of the applications. And we will close the public hearing and move into our public meeting, which is the point where the commissioners discuss and then take a vote on each of the applications. We have, we'll have five voting members for each application and a vote of at least four yeas is needed to get approval on the application. So three, two in favor does not actually get approval of the variance. It has to be four, one or five, zero. And then after we get through our public meeting, we have minutes from our last meeting, which was actually July to approve. We'll open up for any other comment or business on any matters related to zoning board. And if time allows, we will look to formalize our officers and then we will adjourn for the evening. So with that, Elizabeth, if you first, and I don't know, Charles, if you want to offer input, you had mentioned doing a roll call at the beginning. Was that just of the commissioners? Or you wanting to see if all of the applicants are here as well? Charles?
The commissioners, please.
Okay. All right. So do you want to do that roll call, Charles? Just to make sure everybody is here that you're expecting to be here?
Oh, okay.
Elizabeth.
Sure.
We'll let Elizabeth read the applications. Okay.
Okay, so John, John Gustafson.
Present.
Sandra Waleba.
She was muted. I believe she was answering.
Sandy, you're here. She's here. She's probably muted. I don't know.
Yeah, she was waving on the video. I could see that. So she's, she's acknowledging through video if that is acceptable.
Could you unmute yourself, please?
Okay.
So we have John Gustafson. We have Sandy Waleba. Then we have Daniel Bylawik.
Present.
Elizabeth Keys. Bill Teer. Lady Rita and Owen.
Yeah.
And that's about it. And we have Julie, the board secretary is on board, I guess.
Yes.
All right.
All right. Well, Elizabeth, if you would read the first application, please.
Certainly. Application number one, application number six, two, three, six, twenty. Variance from section four point one C agricultural zone dimensional requirements to allow side yard setback of twenty feet as against twenty-five minimum required. Variance requested for the installation of a generator at southern side of the building residential zone AG. Location one forty-four Elm Street applicant Nancy R. N. O.
All right, Charles, is there a staff report for this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So a little background to this application here, this applicant, an application was submitted to the department for installation of a standby generator at the southern side of the building at one forty-four Elm Street. So the zoning review revealed that the agricultural zone requires a minimum side yard setback of twenty-five feet. And the applicant had indicated a twenty feet setback for the generator. Notwithstanding that the northern side of the building currently has a setback of seven point five feet, which may be legally non-conforming. Any new alteration of the building must conform with the regulations. Therefore, the application was denied and the applicant was duly advised and the variance application was, was submitted. When I checked the records, Mr. Chairman, I found that there, there was no prior variance on record for, for this property. So minimum setback required is twenty-five feet. There's already a seven point five foot on one side, which is legally non-conforming. We must meet the required setback for any new addition. So the applicant has now applied to the ZBA for variance and the applicant is here with us tonight. And that is to allow a side yard setback of twenty feet as against twenty-five feet required for the placement of a standby generator as shown on the plot plan submitted. As zoning officer, I have no concerns regarding the granting of this variance, bearing in mind that the northern side of the building is already legally non-conforming and and this southern end has the closest building to this southern end of the property is over a hundred, I should say, at best over a hundred and fifty feet away. So that's my submission, Mr. Chairman. There's a, and you have seen the plot plan, which shows the layout of this application for the generator.
Okay, thank you. And can I ask the applicant just to correct us if we're, is it NO or Eno? And you're muted. I'm sorry.
Eno.
Eno. Okay, Mizino, would you like to present your application?
Yeah, I mean, he's pretty much summed it up. I just want to put a standby generator, twenty kilowatt standby generator on that side of my house. It's twenty feet versus twenty-five feet from the property line. There's really no other location where it would, would be suitable for it. So that's pretty much it. Charles has pretty well summed it up.
All right. Do you have an approximate size? Is this, the drawing we have, is that pretty much to scale?
I think so. Yeah. I mean, my contractor drew it. So it's a
Okay.
It's a twenty kilowatt generator. The pad is there. Charles saw the pad when he came out. Now they put it there before they applied for the first permanent. So the pad's been sitting there with nothing on it.
Okay. Tell you what, I'm gonna, if commissioners don't mind, because I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to see everybody on screen all the time. So I'm gonna run through a quick roll call, see if anybody has questions for the applicant. Dan, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Elizabeth.
It doesn't seem like this would have any impact. But have you heard, have we heard anything from the neighbors?
No, no, I've not had any feedback from the neighbors.
It seems like you're, there's, there's no one on that side of the property that's very close to begin with. So.
No, it's, it's Anderson Farm. And I spoke with Mr. Anderson and he, he has no problem. It's the, it's the farmhouse that the farm workers use for the summer, but it's empty for the rest of the year.
Great. Nothing, nothing.
Okay, Rita?
Nope, no questions.
All right, Paul?
No questions.
All right, Jim?
I'm also, thanks.
All right. And you prefer Sandra or Sandy?
Sandy's fine.
Okay.
No questions. I looked it over. It looks good.
Okay, all right. Mizino, any additional information you want to share with us?
No, I don't think so. Appreciate your time.
Okay. At this time, if we have anybody on the call who wishes to speak in support of the application for variance, Charles, are you aware if we have anybody wishing to speak on this one?
No, I don't have anyone that wishes to speak either for or against the application, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we'll just do one last pass. Anybody wishing to speak either for or against this application? All right, record will show no one spoke up. With that, Elizabeth, if you'll read in the second application.
Number two. Application sixty-two, thirty-seven, twenty. Variance from section five point two B two permitted principal uses to allow a religious institution in the agricultural zone. Agricultural zone AG, location one oh five Marsh Street, application applicant Kevin Timbry.
Okay, and just to confirm, like I said, I don't have a full view of everyone. Do we have Mr. Timbrow with us?
Yes, I'm here. Hello, everyone.
Okay.
My wife.
Hi. Good evening. Good evening. Charles, I'll start with you. You have a staff report for this application.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the background to this is that on November seventh, twenty sixteen, zoning board of appeals received an application requesting a youth variance to permit a church at property known as one oh five Marsh Street, Weathersfield CT. This property is located in the agricultural zone. And churches are not permitted in this zone. And as such, a variance is required for, for that use. Also pursuant to section ten, four, F four of the zoning regulations of Weathersfield. The application was referred to the planning and zoning commission and they did not have any comments presently regarding this application. The then applicant and the applicant at that, at, at, the applicant in twenty sixteen was for was Mark Shebert of thirty-five Terrace Road, Weathersfield. And the owner was James Clinch of nine oh three Ridge Road in Weathersfield. So just to recap, ladies and gentlemen, I'm referring to the application that was made on, in twenty sixteen and not this present application. So on November fifteenth, twenty sixteen, the Weathersfield planning and zoning commission reviewed the application. And they requested that a full site analysis be conducted prior to the zoning board of appeals meeting. On November twenty-third, twenty sixteen, Peter Gillespie, the town planner, and the then CEO visited the site and they made the following comments for consideration by the zoning board of appeals. The first thing that they commented on was that there are several areas where curbing is missing along the edges of the driveway. And that should be repaired. And this driveway that I'm referring to is the one that leads from the first entrance to the property when you travel east along along Marsh Road before you make that bend to go towards a highway. So the, the drive, and that's the driveway that runs along the western edge of the property must only be used as an entrance. So this, this driveway that I refer into, Mr. Chairman, it was suggested that that be used only as an entrance and that the, the relevant signage and pavement markings be put in place. And that was that was a recommendation from the, the town engineer. Number three was that any broken edges of pavement in the drive aisles and parking spaces should be repaired. There are currently twenty-one parking spaces. This is adequate for up to eighty-four seats within the church. And this far exceeds the current proposal of forty seats. So at that time, the proposal for the number of seats in the church would be forty. I have not seen a proposal for any seating number at this time. So any seating beyond eighty-four seats would require additional parking and a new site plan approval. The required and provided handicap parking space must be compliant with ADA required dimensions. There are currently three light posts in the parking area. And no lighting is required. However, if it is determined by the applicant that lighting is required, any new lighting will be required to comply with the current zoning regulations. And lighting requirements, all lights must be cut off. There is no street address on the front of the building. The number is required to be placed for emergency response. The applicant will need to ensure that the building is compliant with the required building codes to be used as a place of assembly. This would include complete ADA accessibility and various other life safety codes. The Weathersfield building apartment will require architectural plans to ensure that compliance is met. There is a fallen tree to the rear of the property that should be removed as some of the debris from the tree blocks a portion of the parking space. And last of all, the scrub and brush along the white fence should be cleared per town property maintenance code. So the property was used. The property use was not reviewed by the planning and zoning commission. The applicant at that time submitted to the board information outlining the proposed operational structure of the building, including floor layout, the number of persons to be accommodated in the building and the full description of the use of every segment of the building. The variance was granted by the ZBA on November twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen, with the above mentioned items listed by the town planner and the CEO as conditions of approval, including the addition of a stipulation that states as follows. And it says, one way install a one-way do not enter sign on either side of the driveway at the intersection with the parking lot. Two, the property owner must trim and continually maintain existing shrubbery in the front yard so as to maximize sideline distances for vehicles traveling eastbound and Marsh Street and making a left turn into the driveway. The variance was not filed under land records. Neither was the property used for a church. And to the best of my knowledge, the property remained unoccupied up until this point in time. The applicant has now applied to the board of appeals for the said variance for the property located in the agricultural zone to be used as a church contrary to the provisions of section five, two, B two of the zoning regulation, which does not expressly permit a religious institution in the agricultural zone. The current application was brought to the attention of the planning and zoning commission at their meeting on November seventeenth, twenty twenty. And the commission offered no, no comments or objections. It should also be noted by the applicant that any exterior work to be done on the property may require a certificate of appropriateness from the historic district commission. There you go, Mr. Chairman. That's my report on the application for this variance.
Okay, thank you. Can I just ask a clarifying question before we hear from the applicant? So the, just so we're all clear on this, there was a variance that came before the ZBA in November twenty sixteen that was approved, but it was never completed. Is that?
It was approved with stipulations and those stipulations are what I read from the recommendations from the planning and zoning commission. And the reason why that, that variance became null and void is that it was not filed on the land records. And any variance, any variance that's granted by the board of appeals must be filed on the land records after fifteen days of publication in the local newspaper before it can become updated.
Okay. And so just to further clarify, that approval from November twenty sixteen was never filed. And so it is null and void. So we're hearing this as a new application for variance. But you have discussed it recently with planning and zoning and they had no additional comment.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for that. With that, if the Timbrows would like to walk us through the application, that would be wonderful.
Yes, hello, everyone. Charles, thanks so much for going through that extensive list from the prior application. But my wife and I moved to Weathersfield about five years ago and really fell in love with the community, fell in love with what Weathersfield had to offer. And we've always had this passion and this call to plant a church. And we really felt like God was calling us to plant here in Weathersfield. So February twenty twenty, to be exact, February twenty-third of twenty twenty, we launched Generation Church over at Webb Elementary School. So we were meeting in Webb Elementary Schools auditorium and cafeteria. We had the kids space in the cafeteria and then we were, we had the worship experience for the adults in the, in the auditorium. And we launched with about two hundred people attending our church. And then three weeks later, got shut down by a global pandemic. So didn't anticipate this, didn't realize what was going on. You know, it's not something that we planned for, but knew that we had to pivot and we had to shift. And we ended up moving completely virtual to an online worship experience. So ever since March, February, well, March twelfth, really, that's when we found out. So ever since March, we've been a virtual church streaming online every Sunday at ten AM through YouTube and Facebook. And we also have Zoom meetings going with our small groups that we have. So we try to continue to build community and stay in touch. We participated in the back to school backpack drive here in town where our church came together and donated over seven thousand items to the students in Weathersfield. We're partnering with a local food banks and other churches in the area with the Thanksgiving food drive coming up. And so our heart really is here in Weathersfield. And when we came across one oh five Marsh Street, you know, this was a property that we had looked at a few times. And although, you know, it's, it's a house, we definitely saw it working in, in our, for our, for our worship experiences. And you know, in the current climate that we're in with COVID nineteen, we are really focusing on more of a more of a micro gathering type of setting where it's going to be smaller groups gathering together, multiple services. And so after carefully considering and, and talking with our, with our board, we just knew that this was property that could work for us for a period of time. And so we ended up having a conversation with Peter Gillespie and just kind of talking through what this would look like and had a meeting with Charles and a few of the other zoning committees. And basically, we're here to start the ball rolling on everything, on everything and seeing what we need to do to get this property ready and set in order to start gathering. Did I miss anything?
All right. Thank you. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I said, I just said he did good.
Okay, very good. A couple of questions and I'll go around the horn again. So do you own the property at one oh five?
We do not own the property. Jim Clinch still owns the property. We are leasing right now from him.
Okay. And you heard, obviously, Charles went through the rather extensive list of stipulations that we had had last time around with the property. Anything in there that you anticipate having issues with or changing dramatically? I guess particularly the capacity that it's approved for, sounded like up to eighty-four?
Yeah, that, that, that wouldn't be an issue at all in regards to capacity because we actually have a church software that allows people to register. So that's kind of how we would do it. A lot of churches are having people register to come to to service. So that's kind of the approach that we would take. And we'd kind of really know who's coming for what specific service and so the capacity, you know, we, we are not anticipating would be an issue.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna open it up and I'll go in opposite order of how I did the first time. So Sandy, any questions for the applicants?
Would the other stipulations now be part of this? The one-way drive sign, would those also be incorporated?
That's my question. Is that a question for me?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so what I did, I just went through the findings of the, of the planning and zoning commission and the stipulations that was attached to the to the previous approval. I, I mean, I'm not necessarily suggesting that these be added to the, to the, to the approval, if any. But the board will look at it and in their view, what they see fit, if they see if it, that all these stipulations be attached to an approval that's granted tonight, then that's up to the board entirely.
Yeah. So when we get to our public meeting, Sandy, and there's a motion, the motion can include any or all of those same stipulations.
Thank you.
Yep. Jim, any questions for the applicants or for Charles?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, this property has not been, it's been vacant for many years, hasn't it? Prior to, prior to you guys leasing it. Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, it has been vacant. We have had several inquiries about it, but no one took it up.
And when did you start leasing it?
October.
October, okay. Okay, great. Okay, I was curious because it's been, as long as I lived here, it's been vacant. So congratulations and bringing it back to life. Thank you. That's great.
Thank you. We're trying.
All right, Paul, any questions?
Actually, I do have a question. Thank you, Mr. For the applicant, you said that you guys are gonna have all the members register on the day of them coming to service. What would that look like per se? Like, what's the capacity you're expecting? I'm just taking into consideration that now we're dealing with a pandemic. And even though I saw that there was some form of precedent set that, you know, there was a variance, well, technically granted. This is a different, this, these are different circumstances. So what is that going to look like?
Yeah, so we don't expect that we'll really even be doing services probably until the spring, at least just because of the pandemic. Or if we do, it'll be more like our core type of invitation only meetings. We can do the virtual experience. That'll be like live pre-recording. So it'll be really controlled until this whole thing is figured out. I think the biggest thing for us right now is that we don't even have an opportunity, like we're recording church in our basement currently. So to have a spot that we could do live pre-recordings and have a specific group of people and then gradually and slowly move to services as restrictions ease and people feel comfortable. And, you know, we are super self, not really self-conscious, but just conscious of the pandemic. We have three little kids too. So it's really just the starting point for us.
Yeah. And we will, we will also follow all sorts of guidelines set by the CDC and the the governor's orders to have, you know, sanitation stations and our volunteers wearing masks and requiring masks to
Temperature checks.
Temperature checks at the building. So we had two outdoor gatherings at Webb, one in September and then one in November. And we followed all those protocols, worked with the physical services department and Joanne McPhee at the, at the board of it to kind of make sure that, that everything was followed. And, and we followed everything that they were requesting. So
thank you.
Okay, Rita, any questions?
Yeah, just have a question on hopefully when the pandemic leaves us and you have your congregation at a more full capacity, there wouldn't be any street parking allowed. Is that right, Charles?
You're, you're definitely correct. There would be no street parking.
Okay, so every, yeah. Okay. And then what kind of a sign are you planning on? Or are you planning on sign?
So we really, we're trying to do something pretty traditional. Again, we have the historic district too, if this gets approved. But we noticed that a lot of the restaurants, like the Charles, we really like that type of a look where it's kind of this like, it almost looks like a home for sale sign, but you know, a lot nicer and has a lot more character. So something really simple like that.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, great. Be nice to have that building used.
Yeah.
All right, Elizabeth. Oh, thank you, Rita. Elizabeth, did you have any questions?
We don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, and Dan?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. More on the capacity issue. How many services were you planning on having on Sunday?
Really depends on quantity of registration. So I'm anticipating to start with two and then we could increase it to three. It's really, it really depends on registration. The soft, the church software that we have right now can cap registration. So if somebody goes to register on our website and say we cap it at maybe twenty people, twenty-five people, whatever we decide, then they won't be able to register for that worship experience. And they'd have to kind of go to the next one.
And thank you. And my last question, is that building currently handicap accessible?
So there, there is a handicap ramp in the So there, there is a handicap ramp in the back that leads to the inside of the building.
Okay. And how about inside? Are the bathrooms handicap accessible and?
They, they are. Um, yeah, they have the railings on each side of the toilet seats and stuff.
It seems that the previous applicant did a lot, like there's a sprinkler system and fire extinguishers and handicap accessibility and things like that. We just noticed as we were, as we were in there.
Thank you.
All right. Any uh, follow-ups from any of the commissioners?
No.
Okay, um, I was just curious if you, if we go back to uh, what seems like eons ago now, but uh, early part of the year when you were having the services at Webb, how many? What, what was a typical Sunday like in terms of number of attendees?
Yeah, so we, we launched um, with about two hundred people in attendance and that was kind of inflated. We had a lot of friends and family that came to support us and check us out. Um, and then the following two weeks, it was about between seventy-five and a hundred people. And then, then we were shut down.
We don't really know.
Right, yeah. Then things changed, okay.
We tried to engage it online and, but you know, you don't know exactly what those look like.
Uh, right. Is there anything else you guys would like to add to what you already presented?
No, we uh, we just appreciate your time and are excited to uh, to be here.
All right, thank you. And uh, at this time, Charles, we will open it up if we have any callers or attendees on the line who wish to speak either in support of or in opposition to this application.
Okay, so um, we have um, we have one uh, a joint-in-property owner that is present. Um, he indicated to me that he did not wish to, to speak. He just wanted to um, to listen in and on the um, on the application, uh, and he's present with us here tonight. Um, so.
Okay, so does not wish to speak either, either way?
Right, he indicated to me that he, he did not wish to speak. He just wanted to um, to listen in on the application.
Okay, a- and if I could ask a related question back to the Timbros, have you had any discussions with any of the neighbors in the surrounding area?
Uh, no, we haven't. Um, uh, individually, uh, we did send out the letter uh, that Charles gave us to the, I think it was thirty-three um, people. Um, I also am very close with uh, Pastor Derek of First Church. Um, where we were closely with him. I'm a part of a prayer group with him. So we've had conversations about it. I know they're kind of right next to us. Uh, but we've had conversations too about this.
Okay. Uh, okay, I'll give one last uh, call just because I can't see everybody on screen. If uh, we have anybody again who wishes to speak as part of this application. And no one has spoken up. All right, thank you very much. Um, Elizabeth, if we could read the next application in place.
We're at number three. Application sixty-three eight twenty, variance from section three point seven dimensional requirements to allow side yard setback of eleven feet as against twelve feet required, an aggregate side yard of twenty-four feet as against twenty-seven feet required. Variant sought for the installation of a heat pump at the eastern side of building, residential zone A one. Location fifty-one Meadowgate Street, applicant Mark Lemare. Hope I got that right.
All right, thank you, Charles. Is there a staff report for this one?
Yes, so, so the applicant inquired about the um, setback requirements for the installation of a generator in the side yard. Um, the applicant was advised of the minimum and um, of the minimum side yard and the aggregate side yard requirement for this A one zone in which the property is located. And as such, the application was submitted seeking the above-mentioned variants. Uh, there is no prior variance on record for this property. So the building has um, side yard setback as follows. Three thirteen feet to the west and fifteen feet to the east. Uh, this is in conformance with the uh, setback for both the minimum side yard, which is eleven feet. So the, the minimum side yard required is eleven feet and um, he currently has thirteen and fifteen. Uh, the aggregate side yard um, is uh, twenty-seven feet. And um, uh, the generator when installed at the side of the building will leave only eleven feet as against twelve feet required. And added to the existing thirteen feet will realize an aggregate of twenty-four feet as against um, twenty-seven feet required. Uh, so the applicant, uh, has, you know, this application before you today and um, staff has assessed the application and has no concerns regarding the granting of this variance.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Um, and again, I'll ask uh, for, please to correct us if we're off on the pronunciation. Is it Mr. Lemare?
Yes, that's perfect.
All right, perfect. Uh, would you like to walk us through the application, please?
Yeah, very similar to what Charles said. I just want to put in a heat pump. I know the paperwork says heat pump or generator, but it's a heat pump. It's a heating and cooling unit. It's like a central air unit. Um, it's a small, efficient unit just going on the side yard there, kind of directly across or fairly directly across from where my neighbor's unit, uh, where she has hers in her yard. Um, it's just the best place to put it. I, I realize it's one foot variance from the side yard requirements. Uh, but putting it, the only other spot would be in the back of the house, but that's where the patio is and it would be less ideal. It's just, it seems like it's the right place to put it. It's where all the power is under the house. Um, so um, that's about it. That's where I'd like to, for it to go. But I think it's, you know, it's only off by a foot.
Okay, and it would be, so the, the unit itself looks like it's uh, three feet, but you have to allow a, a one foot gap between the house and the unit. Is that what I'm seeing on the?
Yeah, we, we, we rounded up to three feet. The unit is actually thirty inches.
Okay.
It needs to be, it needs to be one foot away from the house. So it'll, um, it's really, the variance is really for six inches, but uh, I just rounded it up to a foot.
Okay, and uh, you mentioned your neighbor um, that is directly on the side there. So is there any barrier between the two yards?
No, the, there's a slight difference uh, in height. Maybe her, her yard is maybe two or three high feet higher. There's a small retaining wall right there.
Okay, a- and you mentioned she has a, um, is it a central air unit?
She does, yeah.
There, okay. And have you spoken with her about the plan?
I have, I have. She has no issues with it. Um, in fact, hers is much closer to the property line than what mine would be.
Okay. Uh, and what about visibility from the street? Uh, is there anything, is any visual barrier between this and this from Meadowgate?
Well, it's, it's there on the side of my yard. I mean, certainly I have a lot of shrubs and stuff there that would be blocking it for the most part. Um, I mean, I think you'd really almost have to walk onto my property to see it, or you couldn't get it from, to see it from an angle. I've had the sign out there. A few neighbors have been curious as to what I was doing, but nobody voiced any concern.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna run through the list again just to see if we have questions. I'll start with uh, Rita. Any questions for the applicant?
Uh, my question actually is probably more curiosity. Is a, is a heat pump any noisier than a central air conditioner?
No, I, I believe it's uh, supposed to be even quieter because it's a newer unit. I mean, really, I plan to use it. Um, it's a heating and cooling unit. I primarily plan to use it for uh, for cooling in the summer. Um, but apparently it can provide some very efficient electric heat um, in the winter, but only down to say thirty or forty degrees. If it's really cold, it's not gonna do the job.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, Paul, any questions?
No questions for me.
All right, thank you. Uh, we'll go to Jim next. Any questions for the applicant?
No, all set.
All right, and how about Sandy?
All set.
And Dan?
All set, thank you.
All right, and Elizabeth, any questions? Okay, um, all right, Mr. Lemare, anything else that uh, you want to add?
Uh, no, that's it. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and Charles, at this point, I will open it up if we have anybody who wishes to speak on this application, either for or against. Are you aware that we have anybody, Charles, for this one?
We don't, we don't, Mr. Chairman, we don't have anyone now.
Okay.
Expressing any view either way.
All right, and you haven't heard anything um, directly? No comments from neighbors or anything, Charles?
No, I haven't.
Okay. All right, uh, Elizabeth, why don't we go to number four?
Number four, application number sixty-two thirty-nine twenty, variance from section three point seven dimensional requirements to allow aggregate side yard of thirteen point eight feet as against fifteen feet required. Variant sought to install a standby generator at the eastern side of the building, residential zone B. Location twenty-one Robbinswood Drive, application, applicant Mark Trahan.
All right, thank you. And Charles, is there a staff report here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So an application was submitted to the building department for the installation of this generator at the eastern side of the building. The zoning review revealed that based on the proposed location of the generator, the setback at the eastern side will only be eight feet and um, added to the existing five point eight feet on the western side, the aggregate side yard will only be thirteen point eight feet as against fifteen feet required. So this, this is a B zone, which requires a minimum side yard setback of five feet and then aggregate uh, fifteen feet. So uh, the applicant will now be down to thirteen point eight feet as against fifteen feet. And that is um, with uh, both side yards taken into account, five point eight and um, and eight feet. Uh, so although, yes, so although, like I said, the minimum side yard would be met, but um, the aggregate side yard is what the variance will um, be necessary for. Uh, there's no prior variance on record for this property. Um, so the applicant was advised that he needed to get this variance and the applicant is now before you. I have no concerns regarding the granting of this variance. I've not had a feedback from any um, joint-in-property owner whether for this um, variance or against.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Trahan, if you would like to walk us through the application?
Yeah, as you as I've said, Charles did a great job. Um, we have on that side of the house, um, uh, a, and just for the record, my wife would prefer to see this on the other side of the house. Um, but if, if you take a look at what we've submitted to you, we built an addition on the other side of our home that is complete slab. Um, and there's no way for us to, even if we wanted to, to trench, we'd have to go underneath the driveway. We have a koi pond in the backyard. We'd have to go under a koi pond in the backyard to get it. Um, and, and candidly, the spot that we have on the home, we do have a AC uh, unit um, on one side of the chimney. Hopefully you guys have gotten images from us uh, on what we supplied. And so on one side of the chimney is the AC unit. The other side of the chimney is the proposed area that we would like to be able to put the emergency generator. Um, and also, as you'll see, based on what we shared, we plan on dressing up that side of the house. Um, uh, with, if you, there's a picture of an actual walkway in the front of our house that will be carrying along the side of that and there'll be plantings in front of that generator uh, to be mindful of, of my neighbor. Uh, my neighbor and I are like brothers. Um, uh, and he actually is gonna be looking at a generator as well. I think everybody in Weathersfield is looking at generators, it seems, but um, I'm sure we'll now that we're all putting them in. Um, but uh, it's a perfect spot for us in the sense of um, the uh, gas and the electric is right there in that corner of the home uh, and from the street. Um, once um, uh, even without any um, plantings around it, you'd have a very hard time actually seeing it from the street. But we are gonna be planting ornamental grass or something in front of it, so it, it'll be hidden.
Okay, yeah, thank you for the additional uh, visuals. I'm looking at the picture where you have the um, the blue um, crate to represent where the generator is gonna go.
Yes, that's not the same. Just to be fair, that's not this, the generator is bigger than that. That's just to give you an idea on where it's gonna be situated, the generator.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and actually that was gonna be my question. So how, how much further roughly beyond where the central air unit um, extends will this go?
It's a, almost a photo finish. Um, it's about, it's within an inch sticking out of where the AC unit is right now. Um, uh, the amount of space, it's literally would sit about six inches outside of the front of the chimney is what the AC unit is, and this unit would be about the same.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go uh, around the horn again. I'll start with Elizabeth on this one. Any questions for the applicant?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, uh, Dan?
No questions, thank you.
Sandy, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
All right, how about Jim?
Just one. So as we look at this photo here, is that, i- is that street-facing? So you're on the street and you'll be able to see the unit?
Um, let me look at the picture. Yep, um, what you're looking at there, I assume is, we're looking at the same picture. I'm having a hard time looking at yours.
Um, I'm sure, I'm looking at the one with the chimney where you got the tape measure showing, yeah, so I'm just trying to orient myself. Would, would you be, would this be visible from the street or visible from your backyard?
It'll be visible from our backyard. And if you look deeper in that picture, you can actually see the AC generator, just a little bit of it sticking out. I don't know if you seen that. It's underneath the, there's a little, the lowest purple flower there, underneath there, the generator. Um, it's fairly camouflaged, but you can see that it sticks out about six, seven from the chimney now.
Yeah. Okay, but primarily what we're looking at is a visual, i- as if you were standing in your backyard. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Paul, any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you. And Rita?
No, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Trahan, anything else you want to add?
No, thank you for your service. I know they don't pay you a lot.
Thank you, thank you. Um, okay, Charles, do we have anybody who wishes to spike, uh, speak either for or against this application?
No, we, we have no uh, no one who expressed any, any concerns or wanted to speak um, for or against this application.
Okay, and, and Mr. Trahan, just to go back one more question, you mentioned, um, so the, the view that we have where, I'll go back to the picture with the, the blue crate to represent, that's the view directly from your neighbor's side yard, correct?
That would be correct. Um, you'll see, I think there's about twenty-five feet or twenty-six feet between our houses from wall to wall. Um, that's taken from my side of the yard. And yes, that is correct. That would be my neighbor's view. And as I mentioned, um, we're gonna be planting it all in front of that, that particular area.
Okay, and that was the neighbor you referenced earlier that uh, you've already spoken with and?
Yes, he's actually the plan and putting a generator, I think, on their side.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Uh, Elizabeth, I think we are ready for application number five.
Right, number five, application number sixty-two forty twenty, variance from section six point three I three A sign regulations to allow wall sign of two hundred and thirty-two point zero seven square feet as against a hundred and twenty-five square foot maximum permitted. Regional commercial RC zone, location thirteen eighty to fourteen thirty Berlin Turnpike, shop fourteen twenty. Applicant Seer Jordan Lane LLC.
All right, thank you. And uh, Charles, the staff report on this one, please?
Yes, so um, the applicant did her, her groundwork, uh, so to speak, on this application before contacting the department. So when she contacted the department, she uh, pretty much had all her docs in a row. Um, and the, uh, and a request was submitted um, for a sign larger than permitted on the um, facade of the building, um, known known as fourteen twenty Berlin Turnpike. So this, this shop is located in the assessors um, parcel known as thirteen eighty to fourteen thirty Berlin Turnpike. And it's situated at the corner of um, Jordan Lane and Berlin Turnpike. Uh, so um, this particular store holds the farm, the former uh, Palace Department Store. And it's evidenced by the sign that's still present on the facade of the building. So, the applicant has applied for variance to allow the new signage for the prospective Shoppers World Department Store. And staff has reviewed the proposed request for the variance from section six point three I three A of the zoning regulations of whether it's real pertaining to the sign requirements and has determined the following. So, the regulations currently allows two square foot of wall signage for each linear foot of frontage. The applicant is requesting two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-two point zero seven square foot of signage on the frontage of the subject store. So, if we take that calculation of two square foot per linear foot, we would realize that the linear measurement of the of the shop as it exists is two hundred and thirty-four feet. Hence, the applicant would be allowed four sixty-eight square feet of signage. However, the regulation has a stipulation there that says the maximum allowable signage is one twenty-five square feet for one sign or any number of signs on that particular facade. So, based on that analysis, the applicant is requesting a variance for an additional one hundred and seven square feet for the sign area to be two hundred and thirty-two point zero seven square feet. And so, we arrive at that by minus one twenty-five square feet from the allowable the allowable, that what should be allowed. And so, we arrive at a square footage of two hundred and thirty-two square feet for the sign. Staff reviewed the application and has no concerns regarding the granting of this variance.
Okay, thank you, Charles. And who do we have speaking on behalf of this application? And if you would just give your name and address for the record, since it's not directly on what we have in the agenda. I think the speaker is on mute. Ah, okay. So, I believe it was, was it Lori?
Can you unmute yourself, please, Lori?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, there we are.
I don't know how I got muted. Hi, Lori Davenport from Yash Sign and Display. I have forty-two Thomas Street, East Hartford, Connecticut.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us about the application?
Okay, well, basically, Shoppers World, you know, is a fairly large department store that will be moving into the fourteen twenty location. As you could see, it's a very, very large storefront, two hundred and thirty-four linear feet. The sign facade is eighty feet by twenty-four feet. And we feel a one hundred and twenty-five square foot sign is going to look very lost in that location. That particular store is only visible by westbound traffic. As you're coming down Berlin Turnpike eastbound, you would not see that storefront until you entered the plaza. That store is off to the right. There is over four hundred and eighteen feet of setback from the time that you enter that drive entrance to that storefrontage. So, that by having a one hundred and twenty-five square foot sign is really disabling that particular store of getting a lot of good visibility. We just feel like that is a disadvantage for them. And considering Stop and Shop, they have a fairly large sign which is definitely over the allowance. Stop and Shop has a total of two hundred and eighty-three point six square feet of signage. And I would kind of compare Stop and Shop and Shoppers World is probably is almost, almost an equal draw to that particular plaza. So, it would be really, really nice, I think, for that plaza to get that, you know, added advertisement and getting people in there. So, if we could see too, getting a larger sign there, that I think that would really work.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll run through again. Quick question, when, when is Shoppers World planned to be operational in that location?
They're trying to shoot for February.
Okay, all right, I'll go down the list again.
Open earlier, but you know, slowed everything down for them.
Okay. I'll start this time with Dan. Any questions for the applicant? Dan, you may be muted.
Nope, no questions, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Elizabeth?
Kind of alluded to one of my questions, it's more for Charles. Do any of the other, I mean, I'm trying to envision this area, do any of the other signs in that, stores in that property have, or that area have a variance? Because it seems like there's some large ones around there.
Yes. Like the applicant says, Stop and Shop seem to have a much larger sign than that would be permitted today. However, it seems to me that I did not find a variance in the records that show that Stop and Shop actually got a variance for, for a larger sign. What I saw, and during my time, I remember that Stop and Shop had come in to replace some existing signs. And we, and they went to the design review and they were granted the building permit and so on. But it's, it's either that, I don't think a variance was granted. At that time, these signs would probably have been allowed in the, on the, in the front of the building.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rita, any questions?
No, it's a lit sign, is that right? So, I guess I did have a question. It's, a sign would be lit twenty-four hours a day?
Shoppers, Shoppers World will be lit at nighttime, yes. The tagline will not be lit.
Okay, not flashing, though?
No, no.
No, okay.
The channel letters, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Rita. Paul, any questions?
No questions from me, thank you.
All right, thank you. Jim, any questions?
I have two. Do you know, do the, so this application is being submitted by the tenants. Do you know, does the plaza owner have a view on this?
They approved it. Within the package I submitted was their, their signed approval.
Okay, yes, we had to get the applicant, the property owner's signature and all applicants. I just like to point out, I just like to point out for the record at this time that a variance was granted when was this, in June of two thousand and five for a store that's presently existing. And that's the Evelyn Store over on that same end of the building. And I think the Evelyn's is the last store toward Berlin Turnpike. They, they, they were granted a variance to have their sign larger than that which was allowed.
I was just curious, the second question I have is, I don't know if the tenants are hard over on, is it the size that's the issue? Or is it the shape? It would be, it's the only one that would have a peak, the others are sort of flat. And it's just inconsistent with the other shapes. Is it size or shape that they're more, yeah?
It's, it's both. I mean, it's a huge storefront. It's almost as large as Stop and Shop storefront. And all the other stores are much, much smaller. And there is a huge peak area that seemed to have been designed specifically to place a sign. And yeah, it's, it's such a large area that the one hundred and twenty-five square foot sign would look lost in there. Only take up about six, six and a half percent of that, that area.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, and Sandy, did you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else from the applicant perspective that you wanted to share?
Um, no, I, I believe I covered it all. Charles did mention about some of the other stores. They were just able to utilize their spaces really well and have some nice impact with their signage. And I believe Shoppers World, you know, it would be nice if they could utilize their space properly.
All right, thank you. Charles, this time, we'll open it up. If, do we have anybody who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application?
No, Mr. Chairman, we, we have no one that wants to speak in favor or against this application.
Okay, and I'm going to do one last sweep, give it a second here, if we have any commissioners who have any remaining questions for any of the applicants?
Sorry, one more, just to be clear, what we would be ruling on, it's the size of the lettering, right?
The size of the overall sign.
Yeah, so the
Yeah, so there's Shoppers World, and then there's a tagline below Shoppers World.
Got it, but the, the structure is already existing. It's the lettering within the structure. Okay, I understand now. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good clarification. Any other questions? All right, and Charles, just to reconfirm, we have nobody remaining who wishes to make any comment on any of the applications?
We, we have no one that wishes to comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, at this point then, if we could have a motion to close the public here?
I'll make a motion to close the public here.
Can we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, with that, we have closed the public here. We will move into our public meeting. And again, just as a reminder, this is where the commissioners discuss the applications and we will bring each one to a vote. There's no additional testimony that we hear during this phase of the agenda. So, we'll open it up. Elizabeth, if you would read the first application.
Sure. Application sixty-two thirty-six twenty, variance from section four point one C agricultural zone dimensional requirements to allow side yard setback of twenty feet as against twenty-five feet minimum required. Variance requested for the installation of a generator at southern side of the building. Residential zone AJ, location one forty-four Elm Street, applicant Nancy Anno.
All right, and just as a reminder, as much to myself as to everybody else, we can have open discussion on the application either before or after we bring a motion. So, with that, we will open it up. Do we have any opening comments anybody wishes to make on this application? And if not, do we have anybody who wishes to bring a motion for this application?
I'll make a motion.
Could I just ask a question first as far as voting? Are we all voting? What, Dave?
Yeah, great question. So, we have, we have seven of us present. That should be, Charles, am I correct? That's five, we have five permanent members out of that seven?
We have
A great question, Rita. Thank you for doing that.
We actually, we actually have five full members. And we have a full house, actually. We have five full members and two alternates.
Okay, so for all of the applications tonight, then the, the five full members will be voting. But all members are open and encouraged for discussion and question as we go through the applications. So, Rita, thank you for bringing that up. All right, so could I ask for just a repeat on the motion?
I would make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve the application submitted. We'll bring it to a vote. So, the five permanent members, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed? Okay, and if, I'll ask for our reporter, if you need us to verify anything, please feel free to speak up. But by my indications, we had a five to nothing vote in favor of approving the variance. And with that, we can read in the second application.
Number two, application number sixty-two thirty-seven twenty, variance from section five point two B two permitted principal uses to allow our religious institution in the agricultural zone. Agricultural zone AJ, location one oh five Mars Street, applicant Kevin Timbrough.
All right, thank you. We obviously had a little bit to go through with this one, given the previous history with the property. I will say, though, with all that withstanding, having been vacant, this seems like a good use of the property from my perspective. And fits generally with the area with, we heard mention of First Church being essentially a neighbor to this one. So, I think from my perspective, our decision is really how much or how many of the previous stipulations we may want to work in as part of a motion. But that's my perspective, just to start discussion. I'll ask for any other feedback or points of view.
Makes sense, makes sense.
I would confirm with.
Okay, Dan, it looks like you had a hand up, and I missed you.
I believe there was a site visit done on the property last time. Is, am I using the correct terminology? Yeah, that's a question for you, Charles.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's been four years. Should another site visit be done on the property to make sure that it's up to code?
Well, I did visit the property and my findings are as follows. Number one, the, the curbbing along the edges of the driveway were not in place, so that needs
Okay, those are yours. Okay, you don't need to repeat them, Charles. Okay, I'm with you now.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I thought that was from two thousand and sixteen, that's my bad.
These, these are from two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah.
So, so these seven these ten points are from two thousand and seventeen. It was actually copied from the, from the planning and zoning commission and the CEO's site inspection. But I'd just like to reiterate that I did go there and I noticed that, and I go through them one by one. The first one was that the edges of the driveways, and like we said, the variance was not, was not carried through. So, these things were not done for the most part. And the, the curbbing was still missing, so that's number one. There was no signage at the, at the entrance of the there was no signage that, that says one way in whether, whether on the pavement or in a sign to say that no entry one way. So, that would, that I suppose you would want that to be, to be done, Mr. Chairman. So, the twenty parking spaces are there, they are marked, but I, you know, over time, they have faded somewhat. So, that's that, the handicap the handicap room is in space, is in place, I, I'm sorry. And the handicap space, it seems to me that they had they had widened the handicap space to eleven point five foot. And the night, and the hatched area for, for the accessory was nine foot from my And the night, and the hatched area for, for the accessory was nine foot from my measurements. So I take it that this would be pretty much ADA compliant. The light posts are in place. And the suggestion was that the applicants would determine whether they needed to, to, to put new lighting in. And that they would be required to comply with the zoning regulations for lighting requirements. And all lights must be cut off. There's no street address. So that's that. There's a tree to the rear that's down. I don't know if that's the same tree that staff referred to, a tree that's down. It's not, it's by no, and this tree that I saw down, it could be from a recent storm. It's by nowhere blocking the, the, the parking spaces as suggested from the prior inspection. The scrub and brush along the white fence that had been cleared. But, and it's plain to see that the property has not been used. So it definitely will need some kind of a TLC. And I know that these new, these new applicants will go in and make sure that it's, you know, it's up to, up to, to property maintenance standards. So, so yeah, that, that's it. They pretty much did most of what was to be done.
Okay, thank you for that. Did we have other questions? Or comments from any of the commissioners? All right. With that, then I'm going to take a stab at a motion with the goal of maintaining some consistency from previous discussions on the property. So I would like to move that the application be approved with the following stipulations. Number one, that any missing curbing along the edges of driveway should be repaired or replaced. Number two, that the driveway along the western edge be used only as an interest, entrance and marked as such with signage and pavement markings. Number three, any remaining broken edges of pavement in the drive aisles and parking spaces should be repaired. Number four, any plans for seating beyond eighty-four would require additional parking and a new site plan approval. Number five, all required and provided handicap parking spaces must be complying with ADA required dimensions. Number six, any lighting that is installed or required as determined by the applicant must comply with current zoning regulation lighting requirements, and all lights must be full cutoff. Number seven, street address will be placed on the front of the building for emergency response purposes. Number eight, the applicant will need to ensure that the building is compliant with required building codes to be used as a place of assembly, including complete ADA accessibility and various other life safety codes. Number nine, any fallen trees on the property should be removed, including any debris that blocks any portions of any parking spaces. Number ten, scrub and brush along the fence should be maintained and cleared per town property maintenance code. Number eleven, installation of a one-way do not enter sign on either side of the driveway at the intersection with the parking lot. Number twelve, property owner must continually maintain existing shrubbery in the front yard to maximize sightline distances for vehicles traveling eastbound on Marsh Street. And number thirteen, should be noted by the applicant that any exterior work to be done on the property may require a certificate of appropriateness from the historic district commission. And thus ends my motion.
I will second that motion.
Well done.
I took a few notes. All right, so we have a motion to approve with the stipulations as read into the record. We have a second. So we will now take a vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And all opposed? All right, and again, I'll ask if our recorder needs any clarification, but we seem to have an approval as stipulated by a vote of five to zero. And with that, I believe we are ready for application number three.
Number three, application number six-two-three-eight-twenty, variance from section three point seven dimensional requirements to allow side yard setback of eleven feet as against twelve feet required, and aggregate side yard of twenty-four feet as against twenty-seven feet required. Variants sought for the installation of a heat pump at the eastern side of the building, residential zone A one. Location fifty-one Meadowgate Street, applicant Mark Lemare.
All right, any opening comments or discussion? I will say that this is seemingly one of the more straightforward applications we get. Nothing out of the ordinary from my perspective and nothing that leads me to think there's any, any downside to approval. Any other comments or questions from any of the commissioners? All right, may I request a motion then on this application?
I make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
I'll second Dan's motion.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve as submitted. We have a second. And we have our five commissioners now vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, again, we appear to have a vote of five to zero in favor of approving the application for variance. Elizabeth, can we go to number four?
Number four, application number sixty-three-nine-twenty, variance from section three point seven dimensional requirements to allow aggregate side yard of thirteen point eight feet as against fifteen feet required. Variants sought to install a standby generator at the eastern side of the building, residential zone B. Location twenty-one Robinswood Drive, applicant Mark Treyham.
Comments, questions? Motion?
Motion to approve as submitted?
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who was in there first? All right, we'll go with Dan on that one. All right, so we have a motion to approve as submitted. We have a second. We will now go to a vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, not hearing any opposition, I believe that gives us another five, nothing vote in favor of approving the application. And takes us to number five.
Number five, application number sixty-two forty-twenty, variance from section six point three, six point three I three A sign regulations to allow wall sign of twenty, two hundred and thirty-two point zero seven square feet as against one hundred and twenty-five square feet maximum permitted. Regional commercial R C zone, location thirteen eighty to fourteen thirty Berlin Turnpike shop number fourteen twenty. Applicant Cedar Jordan Lane L O three.
All right, this, so I, I've been at this for a few years and we had a flurry of these types of applications several years ago. And then we've had not too many of them. We've had more, I would say, condenser units and generators of late. But we have, well, I shouldn't say we, I, my philosophy on this has typically been where we can and where it makes sense. We try to be as business friendly as possible. And this is a plaza, you know, as we heard, it's, if you haven't been in there, this, you know, it's offset from the road. It's only visible from travel in one direction. And as we had the, the good clarification during the discussion, the, the front and that structure we saw with the peak, that is there today. So it's just a matter of how much signage we are willing to allow. And, you know, I have to say, having been part of some of the discussions with Gulfbrook Shops and with the Buffalo Wild Wings and some other locations, I think, even with some other signage in that same plaza, this seems certainly quite reasonable to me. So I'll offer that perspective and ask for any other comment or question.
I, I would concur with that. I think that it seems appropriate, given the size of the store itself and given the fact that there are other stores in that plaza that have comparably sized signs. So I think it's consistent with existing.
All right, do we have any other questions? Just general questions, anything for Charles or any other comment on this application? Going once. All right, then if there are no additional comments, do we have a motion on this one?
Make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
All right, thank you, Dan. All right, so motion from Dan, second from Elizabeth. With that, we will go to vote to approve as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we appear to have a five to zero vote in favor of approving the application as submitted. And with that, I'm gonna say I'm rusty on this part, so I'm going to perhaps go overly procedural. Can we just have a motion to close our public meeting before we move into other parts of the agenda?
Do we need to do, I think we need two minutes, right? Does the meeting still need to be open?
Oh, is it? Okay, all right. Yeah, thank you. I'm, see, these two months off have, have kept me, I haven't practiced. So you are correct. I think that is still considered part of me. All right, so we have approval of minutes from July. And I do not have those in front of me at the moment. Do we have enough of us who are here for the July meeting?
It appears the only two absent were Michael Vieira and Paul.
Okay. Did we have any? Let's see.
I have David, Daniel, me, Sandra, and Rita. We're all there.
Okay, that gives us certainly enough. Did anybody have any questions or any requests for edits to the July minutes?
They looked okay to me.
Okay. Anyone who was present at the July meeting wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the July minutes?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, our minutes have passed. And let's see, that takes us, we have opportunity now for any comment on other matters pertaining to zoning board of appeals. Charles, we have anybody else on the line who wishes to make any comment?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so that takes us to, if I'm remembering the agenda correctly.
Could I ask, could I ask a question? Charles, and I don't want to make this any longer, but is there something coming up on changing zoning for fences?
Yes, actually.
Just so that we can read it. We, I know it's late and we don't want to talk a lot.
We, we had suggested some minor changes to the regulations and it went to the planning and zoning commission and twice, the last time being the seventeenth of November. And the conclusion is that it's pretty much accepted. We just have to make just a few minor changes and then we will have amended fence regulation.
And they vote on that, planning and zoning votes to accept or not?
Planning and zoning did pretty much accept, accepted. Like I said, we have not taken the final draft to them yet. But based on what they saw the last time, they thought we were pretty much on stream. I know you had some concerns.
I just wondered who, who makes these changes since it's been, you know, it's been kind of a problem for us, who.
Okay, so, so the, the changes have been made, have been made by myself and Peter Gillespie. Peter Gillespie, myself, and the town engineer meet and we discuss it and we, first I came up with, I was trying to do a radical change and I came up with a lot of different things. And it was thought that it was too long on John, we should keep it simple. So we just made it, made a couple of minor changes and we went back to the, come to the planning and zoning commission and they, they thought that we were on, on, on the right stream to, to have been that modified. So we just have to do a little tweaking and then get back to them. So it's pretty much on stream.
And that actually is a really interesting question. So when, assuming this goes through and that would lead to a change in zoning regulations, how do we get notified of those things? So if there's a change to the actual zoning regulations, is there any notification that comes to us from planning and zoning?
Well, I don't.
Or it just come up next time we have an application for a fence?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if, if the planning and zoning commission will make, will send something directly to the board of appeals to say that we, we have changed regulations. But it will be published, it will be on the website. It will be circulated that there's a change.
Okay.
So everyone will be aware that there's a change in the regulations.
Okay.
All right.
That, that has been kind of a thing in the past, whether what the regulations are and who knows about them. So, okay.
Yeah, but you will, I, I will make sure that you are aware of changes that are made because I know that the fence was a, it was a critical issue, you know.
Yeah.
In recent times, we had some controversial fence construction going on. So we will make sure that we are, we all see this.
We're going to twelve feet high now on security fencing that's allowed. Is that, yeah, okay. All right, excellent question. Any other, and, and my apologies, I should have opened it up to the commissioners. Any other questions from the commissioners on matters related to the Z B A? All right, well, with that, if we could take a few more minutes, we've had this on the agenda for most of two thousand twenty, I believe. We do need to, at some point, formalize officers. And historically, during my tenure, we have had a chair, a vice chair, and clerk that have been formalized positions. I know, Charles, you said the clerk may not be required, but I know historically we have had that. So.
Yes, yes, you could have, I think you could have a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk, of course. Yes, yes, you could have. I think you could have a chair, a vice chair and a clerk, of course, certainly.
Okay.
And, um, and, um, another thing too, would you, would you want to have a set timeframe, like to say, such as every year that you would have a vote to change the, um, you know, not necessarily change, but to re-elect, um, officers?
Yeah, and, and that, um, that's not anywhere in any kind of bylaws or anything that we have, right? Like there's, there's nothing, there's no precedent set for that.
No, I've not seen, I've not seen any kind of bylaws that says, um, after a year, you, yeah, so. I mean, you, you may want to establish some, something like that.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I guess, um, I, I will admit this, I'm not exactly sure, uh, how to get accomplished what we're doing. So I'm going to assume that we should first make a motion around how often we would like to regroup and formalize officers.
Once a year, once a year, it sounds like a reasonable time.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that, uh, we.
Down here or something like that.
Yeah, um, I was actually, so I, I'm going to move that we, um, going forward as a beginning in twenty twenty-one that we formalize officers at the December meeting for the upcoming year. So we'll do it tonight and that'll take us through to our December twenty twenty-one meeting, at which point then we would finalize again for twenty twenty-two.
I, yeah, but, um, I'm thinking that, let's, suppose we don't have a meeting in December. To say the December meeting would be kind of vague, you know what I'm saying? If we could.
I was trying to be more specific because I was, just to say we're going to do it once a year seemed too vague to me, so.
What if we said that we appointed the?
Months, so, you know. So to say the December meeting, you may not have a meeting. You know, um, but the two losses be.
Okay, so I, I, I will, uh, I will amend my motion to, uh, move that once a year before the end of the calendar year, we formalize officers for the upcoming year.
Yes, that sounds like a great opportunity.
Would it make more sense to do it in July when there's new members coming on? Members might be coming off? The terms normally expire June thirtieth?
Fair point. Um.
Because you might be doing it in December and then also we have someone coming off and we're back to without a chair.
Yeah, and I've been on this so long, I've forgotten that. Is that when most terms are up is?
Yes, I think it's, um, it's, uh, June, June thirtieth is the end of the term for the members.
Okay, so I'm going to make a second, I'm going to withdraw my previous motion and make a second amendment. Um, I will amend the motion to move that, uh, once a year as soon as possible
After.
after June thirtieth, we formalize officers for the upcoming year.
I'll second that.
All right, uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, so it is so moved that, uh, once a year, as soon as possible after June thirtieth, we will formalize officers for the upcoming year. Uh, with that, I honestly don't know. I've never, uh, my tenure up until the last couple of years, we, um, had so many people who had been on the board for so long that we never, we, we had the same chair for probably my first, I don't even know how long I've been doing this now, but probably the first nine years, I think we had the same chair. So, um, do we need to nominate folks for the three positions and, um, second those nominations?
Do we want to just turn, yeah, do we want to start just your chair, vice chair and then clerk? Does that make sense?
Yeah, Charles, do you have any opinion on whether we need to make nominations for each one?
You want to do that tonight?
I, I was, if, if people don't mind sticking around for a couple of minutes, I think we could get this knocked out because we've been.
No, the reason why I asked, I thought you said that, I thought we were saying that closest to after June thirtieth, I mean.
Well, yeah, but this is, this is now the closest to, this is now the closest to.
This is last year's.
Twenty twenty, yeah.
And, and we, yeah, this might be a good time to do it. We have a full house and everything. So, um, yes, okay, sure.
Okay, so I'm going to, uh, open it up. Do we have any, um, uh, I, I'm just going to ask, we do it this way because I don't know if we need to be this formal, but I'm going to just request that we do. So let's start with the chair. Uh, if anybody would like to make motions to nominate anyone and then depending on nominations, we will take a vote.
David, I would like to nominate you, to be fair.
All right, thank you.
I think you got broken up there.
I was just saying, I'm not going to second that, so, uh.
Second.
You're second yourself.
Okay, so, uh, any other nominations for chair? Okay, so we will take a vote on, uh, John David Gustafson as chair for the remainder of this term through June thirtieth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you very much. We have a chair. Do we have any nominations for vice chair or anyone who would like to, uh, express an interest in vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Elizabeth as vice chair.
I, I would be happy to. I won't second it because it seems tacky, but if anyone else.
I'll second, second Elizabeth.
All right, so we have a nomination for Elizabeth Keys as vice chair for the remainder of this term. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
All right, and that is approved. We have our vice chair. Thank you, Elizabeth. And finally, any nominations or interest in the clerk position, which is, uh, our role that traditionally does what Elizabeth did tonight, which is reading the applications in and keeping us, uh, on track with the agenda. Anybody willing to accept that role? And if not, we don't have to have it. We can, you know, that's, I don't think that's as critical. We could rotate that one if nobody wants to take that on as a, uh, somewhat permanent assignment. Going on.
I'll take it as, I'll take it as.
You can nominate yourself.
No one else wants to do it.
Okay, so, uh, I'm going to move based on the, uh, uh, lack of expressed interest that we will leave the clerk position open for this rest of this term. Can I have a second on that?
But I thought Elizabeth said that she would, um, do it.
Well, she said it's as the vice chair duties. Yeah, so we'll just rotate it. So we're, yeah, so motion to officially, uh, cap the formalization of officers at chair and vice chair for the remainder of this year. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, congratulations, folks. We have, uh, formalized officers. Uh, I think we started trying to do this back in maybe the February meeting. I don't know when that was, but.
Yeah, that's been hanging from.
Yeah.
Well, we finally got all of us here tonight.
Yes, so it's, yeah, good that we could get to formalize that tonight and, um, yep.
Yep, and, uh, and, and thank you, everybody. I really, um, I, I, for the number of applications that we had to get through, this one, uh, flowed very smoothly. Thank you for all the input and the questions. Charles, thanks for the, the reports to get us started and, um, unless there are any other items, I believe we can adjourn for this month.
Motion to adjourn.
Happy holidays, everyone. This might be the last, this might be the last one for the year, so, uh.
All right, well, thank you again. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks for the patience with all the virtual and, uh, we are adjourned. Take care.
Take care.
Bye bye. Care.
Good night.
Good night.